I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We allow time for the public to comment at the beginning of our meetings. This evening, we have one person sign up in person. If there's anyone... If there's anyone online who wishes to comment, if you could just raise your hand so we get a count of how many people. Do you see anyone on there?
Madam Mayor, Lynn Williams has raised her hand.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll have two people for comment. So we will start out with Chelsea Walsh. If you'll give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Okay. Hey, you guys, my name is Chelsea Walsh. My address is 131 Cider Mill Drive, Unit 207 Hendersonville, 28792. The reason that I'm here today is it's quite unconventional, actually. I want to thank you guys for the respect that you guys gave me during my city council race. And congratulations, Councilmember Smith and Roundtree. I learned a lot from all of you. And when it came down to the actual election, there were many people who showed up to vote that actually did not live in the city. They lived in the county. And when Representative Tim Moffett announced that he was running for the state senate, I saw an opportunity to represent not just the city of Hendersonville, but hopefully the entire county or most of the county of Hendersonville. So I have announced and filed for the North Carolina State House position for District 117. And I understand that the state basically tells you guys how to operate. And I look forward to working with all of you. You guys bring different backgrounds to the council and to the city. And I look forward to learning more and hearing everything that you guys need. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, you've been asked to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Williams, Travia Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Tonight, I'm speaking in regards to a couple matters. One is a consent agenda item, 5B, about the code of ethics and attendance policy. I'm concerned about the term limits that are included in that, which will be two term limits. I mean, I think it's a good idea, but at the same time, I ask that the council consider the same for themselves for term limits as well. And also, I want to ask if the council members themselves will be able to maintain these same guiding standards. The second comment is regarding Boyd Park. Let's see. Oh. Sorry. This has to do with the HPC. And if the council decides to meet with the HPC, we ask that potentially there be a public meeting with public input about that process. I know you spoke about a memorial or a monument on the site. Also, there's a small batch of, patch of green space. And I wonder if the council would consider still dedicating that section as historic Boyd Park. And that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. First item of business is a consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to the agenda or moved from the agenda this evening? Or if not, a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it, we have our agenda. Consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or if not, a motion to approve those items?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Those taken care of. All right. Presentations. We have lots this evening. So I'm going to come around to the front. First one is MVP of the Year.
Yes, Mayor of the Senate, Mayor of the Senate Council. I would like to ask young Will Hutchinson to please come up. And if Brent Detwiler, his department head, would join him with the mayor up here, I think that would be great. So as, just for the public's information, we have a Service Excellence Customer Service Program where we reward and incentivize employees who go above and beyond the call of duty. We have numerous folks in our organization, team members, that really do a really great job for the community and for our organization. And we recognize those folks quarterly throughout the year. And then at the end of the year, we always have our MVP of the Year. And so this year, Will Hutchinson is our MVP. And I'll read what Will did. Will Hutchinson of the City of Hendersonville GIS Division spearheaded on his own a citizen reporter app to replace the report of problem form and to make it easy for the public to report non-emergency issues tied to a special location. Will created the app using the new application technology from ESRI, which is a major GIS software organization, and collaborated with many departments to develop the categories and workflows for the reports. He's willing to assist with, he was willing to assist with the video and marketing of the app and has taken charge of the applications management, monitoring, monitoring and report distribution. Since the application's launch, it's been recognized by ESRI at the 2021 North Carolina GIS Conference and has been recommended by them as a template for other local municipalities. The app's recognition has led to meetings with municipalities to discuss the creation of the GIS app. Will has championed the initiative and used technology in a way to offer Hendersonville residents and visitors a more streamlined customer service experience when reporting non-emergency issues throughout the city. So we would like to recognize Will as our MVP of the Year. And thank you. Congratulations for a job well done, Will.
Service Excellence Annual MVP to Will Hutchinson. In grateful recognition of your outstanding performance, in recognition of your willingness to go above and beyond your job duties, Service Excellence Team voted you the 2021 Annual MVP recognition. Thank you for showing excellent ownership, initiative and efficiency with new technology to assist our citizens. Job well done. You are a part of what makes the city of Hendersonville the wonderful place it is to live, work and visit. You get to keep the certificate. Congratulations.
I guess you get to hang it up.
We get to hang it up?
I think it lifts with your...
Yes. That's great. It's like the Stanley Cup, huh?
Oh, next, we have a proclamation for We Are Hope Week. And Julie and whatever student you have with you. Yes. This is a proclamation for We Are Hope Week. Whereas substance and alcohol abuse negatively affects many areas of the brain, the liver, the heart and other body parts and can cause adverse behavioral, psychological and social consequences. And whereas there were more than 70,630 drug overdose deaths in the United States in 2019, and the drug overdose death rate has increased by over 250% from 1999 to 2019. And whereas substance and alcohol abuse continue to occur among children and youth in North Carolina, in 2019, 35.5% of high school students and 14.4% of middle school students used an electronic vape product. 24.2% of students in high school and 20.4% of students in middle school drank alcohol. 16.6% of high schoolers and 8% of middle schoolers took prescription drugs without a doctor's prescription. And 22.1% of high schoolers and 10.5% of middle schoolers used marijuana, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Preventions 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance. And whereas the Hope Coalition is a grassroots effort initiated by the Henderson County Partnership for Health in 2013 as a community collaborative to educate, evaluate and implement evidence-based models on substance misuse and underage drinking in Henderson County. And whereas student leaders in Henderson County's public schools, six high schools and four middle schools have joined with the Hope Coalition and City of Hendersonville Police Department in educating their peers on alcohol, tobacco, marijuana and prescription drug use and abuse. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim the week of March 7th through 11th, 2022, to be We Are Hope Substance Abuse Awareness Week in the City of Hendersonville and ask all students in Henderson County Public Schools to pledge to be and remain substance-free. Now, would you like to say something, either of you?
I'm just honored that this is a program that we can have for our students. And I'm really honored that our students are willing to take the stand to the pledge to remain substance-free. And I thank you for all the support that we have in recognition of this important event. And we can prevent in our schools with the Henderson County Public Schools, as well as our law enforcement and all of the support that we have. Thank you to our community.
Thank you for what you're doing. Next, we have developmental disabilities awareness. Andrew Thomas. And Eric Off. One or the other, you're... You are?
Andrew Thomas.
You're Andrew, okay. I wasn't sure who. I had two names down here, want to be sure who is here. Nice to meet you. Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas Public Law 99483 enacted by Congress in 1987 designated March as National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And whereas North Carolina is home to almost 200,000 people with intellectual and other developmental disabilities throughout all 100 counties of our state. And whereas it is the responsibility of all North Carolinians to recognize and acknowledge that it is not disabilities, but unjust societal barriers and attitudes that can keep individuals from realizing their full potential at school, work, home and/or in their communities. And whereas all citizens can contribute to improving the lives of people with developmental disabilities by becoming advocates and supporters of their increased independence, capacity and leadership. And whereas expecting and enabling people with developmental disabilities to function independently and productively within our societal and economic structures can strengthen our community in all areas, including public and private sectors. And whereas the City of Hendersonville commends the abound health and other agencies, businesses or organizations and individuals throughout our community working to improve the lives of people with developmental disabilities and their families through advocacy, capacity building and systems change. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and encourage citizens to galvanize efforts that will lead our communities and policymakers to create real system changes so people with developmental disabilities may enjoy equitable, inclusive lives.
Awareness to the needs of people with developmental disabilities and also support to give them what they need. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. All right. Next, the 50th Anniversary of National Senior Nutrition Program. Daniel Carey, right? Okay. Right. This is the 50th Anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program. Whereas since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has helped fund local agencies and organizations such as the Council on Aging for Henderson County, serve home-delivered and congregate meals that ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent and connected. And whereas more than 10 million older Americans face hunger each year, North Carolina is ranked 10th in the country for food insecurity. And more than a quarter of Henderson County's population is 65 and older, which puts thousands of local seniors at risk of malnutrition. And whereas local senior nutrition programs help older adults access healthy food, nutrition screening, education and counseling, social opportunities and other supports that encourage well-being. And whereas the Council on Aging is an integral part of Henderson County's nonprofit network, providing sustenance and more to older community members, especially those most vulnerable to chronic health challenges and social isolation. Now therefore, the City, Council of the City of Hendersonville does hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 to be the 50th Anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program in the City of Hendersonville and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them through nutrition services as essential contributors to the strength of our community. There you go. And would you like to say something? That the Council on Aging does.
I will, I will just thank you, Mayor Volk and the council for recognizing March as Senior Nutrition Program. But also just how pleased we are to operate the Meals on Wheels Program and serve more than 400 people throughout the county and about a quarter of those in the city. So we're pleased to do it and we appreciate the support that you all provide.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now, we have an internal proclamation, I guess you'd say, Fix a Leak Week. And I guess Gracie is not here, so who is?
I won't.
Go and get it.
Brent.
You want to come up and? Come up again? All right. All right. This is the Hendersonville Water Sewer Proclamation. Whereas household water leaks account for nearly 1 trillion gallons of water wasted across the United States each year, equal to the annual household water use of nearly 11 million homes. And whereas finding and fixing leaks is as easily as one, two, three. Check, twist and replace by checking toilet silent leaks, twisting to tighten extra connections and replacing broken fixtures with WaterSense labeled models.
Right on time.
Whereas many common household leaks, including worn toilet flappers, leaking showerheads and dripping faucets are easily corrected. And whereas fixing leaks can save homeowners an average of 10,000 gallons of water per year for the amount of water in a typical backyard swimming pool. And whereas WaterSense is a voluntary partnership program sponsored by the U.S. Fundamental Protection Agency to protect the future of our nation's water supply by promoting water efficiency and WaterSense label products. And whereas EPA's WaterSense Program celebrates Fix a Leak Week, the third week of March, as a time to remind Americans to check their household fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. And whereas the City of Hendersonville Water and Sewer Department is partnering with WaterSense to encourage citizens to fix and fill leaks and promote efficient water use to ensure sufficient water supply for future generations. Now therefore, I Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim the week of March 14th through 20th, 2022, to be Fix a Leak Week in the City of Hendersonville and encourage all citizens and businesses to find and fix leaks and to use water efficiently. Okay. Very good. Thank you all. Next, we have another presentation, the Sidewalk Mural Connection. And...
Hello.
Carpenter?
Thank you.
Lead us off.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Today, I want to introduce Elizabeth Queen, who was one of the artists behind our sidewalk murals that we did back in the fall. Just as a quick recap, the sidewalk murals were completed from the support of an AARP grant. And the mission of those grants are to be catalyst projects that help communities make immediate improvements and jumpstart long-term progress to support residents of all ages. So the Friends of Downtown applied for that grant as a part of our work plan. And a major component of our downtown work plan is connectivity between the Main Street and the 7th Avenue District, not only physical connections, but also interpersonal connections. The sidewalk murals were completed with the help of over 200 volunteers, including students at Hendersonville High School. Some of them came out for hours and hours every weekend during the fall. For me and for our downtown program, the murals are great. But also what was even better was the amount of engagement and volunteerism that we had through the process of putting those murals together, including the volunteer leadership. And Elizabeth was one of those. After that project was completed, Elizabeth approached me about doing an extension to the project to connect the district from, to fully connect the district so it connects from Main Street to 7th Avenue. So it's a proposal that would connect from the hands-on Good of the Hive mural to the 5th Avenue sidewalk murals. She brought the proposal to our downtown community character team, which is our design subcommittee. And we, or the committee gave her extensive feedback. And together, they came up with a proposal of a very modest sidewalk that wouldn't have the base coat that the sidewalks on 5th Avenue and Maple Street had. And really just using the leftover paint and supplies that we had from the murals back in the fall. The downtown advisory board discussed and reviewed it as well. Both the board and the subcommittee recommended that the project move forward. For maintenance, the Friends of Downtown, including volunteers and artists who were a part of the project before, over 200 volunteers were involved, would arrange an annual workday where we touch up the paint, make sure everything looks nice or cover up if needed. So now, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Queen, who has her proposal she'd like to share with y'all.
Thanks, everybody. She offered free truffles. I offer free sidewalk paint, I think. So thanks for having me. I was just, I'm honored to be a part of this community. And the Hendersonville Beeline was something that started as a small idea and it expanded in ways I don't think any of us imagined. And it, she says, exceeded expectations. And we had every demographic of this community come out. We had, you can cross and slice and dice the data any way you want. Demographics from age to national origin to gender to Coke, Pepsi, sweet tea. I mean, it was everything. And people, I think the chorus that we got from that united group was more, more, more. And those were the same words that Mayor Volk used at the ribbon cutting last December. Everybody had so much fun out there, working together, getting to know each other, forging friendships and relationships that never would have happened before. And so I was thinking about that and was invited to do some tours, sidewalk tours for the upcoming Garden Jubilee and Pollinator Month, which is in June. And I thought about it and thought, gosh, okay, we've got the Main Street. We've got the Good of the Hive mural, which is so beautiful. We've got the Beeline and Diamond Cash's incredible work. We've got the Walk of Fame. But what am I going to talk about going down King Street after that? And it was kind of puzzling me a little bit because I can talk about a lot of stuff, but I was going to be stretched a little bit. About that time, I saw this really engaging video from the Netherlands. I used to live there for a little while. And it was this 30-something guy who was hopping and skipping and moonwalking through their village on a hopscotch board sort of work that was very simple. And you couldn't not laugh out loud when you saw it. And it's in your proposal. And I thought about the community and these tours and thought, what can I give to people who come on this tour, whether they're local or from somewhere else, to give them something that they can take with them about our community and our county? And I thought about the creeks and the rivers in our environment. It's so unique for this one county, we have so much. And I thought about the creatures that live there. And this story was born. And as Jamie's already told you, it sort of took off from there. And so really what we're asking of you is very simple. We would like your blessing. We would like your permission to use our leftover budget because we came in under budget. We would like your blessing to use the leftover paint so we're sustainable. And the leftover paintbrushes and equipment. We ask simply for the in-kind services of the city office. Jamie, I can't say enough about this person here. Thank you. To use a volunteer signup application you've got, to use the traffic cones to keep people safe, to promote and hopefully ribbon cut at Garden Jubilee. So that's really kind of what we're proposing. It's a very simple track. It's in your materials. It's animal prints that go up the sidewalk that track a story that's 380 words that will be very carefully and tightly and professionally stenciled on the sidewalk for a while at last. And this is what we hope to do with the support of Hendersonville High School and other students, the many spectrum of volunteers that are waiting to do more. And I'm really hoping that I'll get your blessing today so in March, we can finish the design. And April, we can go out and paint this very simple design. And in May, we'll seal it and cut the ribbon. That's it, I think.
Questions? Anyone have questions? Does anyone have any objection to their moving forward? No objections?
Thank you. We'll make you proud. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. And finally, see. Blue Ridge Literacy Council update. Katrina Maguire, Executive Director.
Good evening, Mayor Volk and the council, as well as John and the rest of the staff. I don't know if I can see with or without these anymore. Thank you for having me. I thought it was about time I gave the council an update from Blue Ridge Literacy Council. I've been there now one year as the Executive Director. My name's Katrina Maguire and it's been an awesome year. This is a great city and the literacy council really does a lot of great work. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of where we are today. Just for full disclosure, we do receive funding from the city as well as we do rent a building from you as well. And we're very appreciative of that, as well as other funding sources in the county and granters. So we have, what does literacy mean to each of you? You know, what comes to mind when you think about literacy? The ability to read, correct? You may also be thinking literacy is so much more. Health, gender equality, poverty, every important social issue is impacted by low literacy. When individuals learn how to read, write, do basic math, use computers, they have the power to lift themselves out of poverty, lower healthcare costs, find and keep sustainable employment and ultimately change their lives and really change the face of the community. So I gave you a pro-literacy.org handout. We get a lot of our statistics from a nationwide survey that's done. And I won't go through all of those statistics, but that's what we use to drive what we do. We are data-driven. And so we focus on adult basic education. So those with neurodiversity, those who need GED help, those that want to get into Blue Ridge Community College. It's really where we founded ourselves. We've also helped with English language acquisition, which is a real serious need to help generational poverty of some of our immigrant families that come here. We do family literacy to help these families that come from different countries assimilate to our culture and be able to start their kindergarten into school so that they can be successful. The study there shows you that the higher success rate for children whose mothers read to them. And so we encourage this reading in English and in Spanish just so that that child gets that love of the written word. And then we also help our at-risk youth. And so we heard a proclamation tonight about substance abuse. And so we believe that literacy, academic success and interpersonal skills help children stay away from things that might take them off course to success. And we do this through an army of volunteers. Our tutors are the backbone of what we do. They're volunteer hours. We get over 7,500 volunteer hours a year. And these are people that work one-on-one with students seeking to gain... with students seeking to gain literacy skills. It's a marvelous bridge between not only ethnicity, but also the age gap, because oftentimes our tutors are retired, and they bring their experience and their wealth of knowledge to someone who's up and coming. And it also helps our senior community stay healthier. Statistics show that when our seniors feel that they're connected and they're relevant, they lead healthier lives. And so again, you see literacy in that whole picture, right? A full circle. Last year, our last fiscal year, we were able to serve just under 200 individuals with literacy needs. Even though it was COVID, it was very difficult. We hybrid to virtual models. We also continue to do one-on-one, being safe. But 97% of those students accomplished their goals. Some of these goals include, let's celebrate this, 14 new citizens of the USA. So that was a real accomplishment. Mothers who were confident when their children began kindergarten because they read to them and they had those extra skills. 10 teens improved their grades so that they could get a fresh start in their next grade. And many gained English skills that saw them receive an increase in pay, a promotion, the ability to attend Blue Ridge Community College or other higher education institutions, and also helped their children with their homework. Daniella was going for a CNA back in September when she joined our organization. She received a tutor who helped her, because this tutor was...had been a nurse. We try and partner people together. Daniella was successful just this January in getting her CNA, and where she worked, although she's not quite working yet as a CNA, received a $2-an-hour raise. That's significant. That's significant. It's all about workforce development, so bringing individuals, adults, who just need a push-up with literacy or English language skills, to help them create a future for them and their families. Brandon was part of our Raise the Age, where the North Carolina State raised the age for children who were adjudicated not as adults. And so we were able to help Brandon stay out of the prison system and bring him on board and help him with his academics. He successfully brought an English and a math grade from an F to an A, and he's attending Blue Ridge Community College and loves to read now. Alma, who is a student and just graduated from our program, has been hired by us in a pilot program that I'm trying to bring our students to be confident in their English skills when they do go into the workforce where they need to use that. Many times, they just need that confidence. And her English is wonderful, but she just lacks that confidence, and so we're building her up. And so the pro-literacy stats that you see before you, there's a need for literacy in this community, and we can all be a part of it. Adult education is in critical need of services. A decline in federal and state funding in the past 10 years has resulted in programs serving only a fraction of the adults in need. Currently, 50% of adult education programs are struggling with long student wait lists. We're not immune to that. We have about over 50 students waiting to be partnered with a tutor or to enter into our program. And there's a variety of reasons for that, but mostly, we are in need of tutors. You know, workers aged 25 and over who have less education than a high school diploma have the highest unemployment rate. And in 2020, recession caused by the COVID-19 pandemic saw adults with less than a high school diploma suffer the highest unemployment rate compared to all education levels. So how you can help and how the public can help is bring awareness that we are here, and we're here to serve. We need tutors. So if you know of someone, or would like to just...in your conversations, and someone says, "I'd like to help someone," tutoring is a very rewarding experience. And we provide training. Many of our tutors had not been teachers before, but we have vigorous training from ESL teachers themselves, who will teach you how to navigate that, and you create long-lasting relationships with these students. You can help by just promoting us to the community in ways that just support us. We have a beautiful house in Patton Park that the city owns and takes very good care of us. Thank you, John. And so that house is full of activities. We'll have every room in the house filled with students and their tutors, or people taking their tests for pre- and post-testing. And so as always, a flurry of activity. I welcome any council member or the mayor to come visit us, although I do see you walking by occasionally. But please, come and visit us. Get to know a little bit more of what we do. But lastly, we just want to thank you wholeheartedly for your support in literacy in this community. And so we hope that together, partnering with other agencies, we will bring our literacy levels higher and make a change in our workforce here in Hendersonville. Thank you so much. Yes?
What is the minimum age to be a tutor?
Right now, it's 18. We just don't take minors.
So you have to be 18?
Yeah. There's some...it's difficult when you have a minor, because we have to have some protections, and then we...you know, then you have to have background checks, and it makes it a little bit more difficult. So although we do background checks when our adult tutors have a minor student, our adult tutors do not have...tutoring adults do not have their background check.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for having me.
Thank you for everything you all are doing in the community. Okay. All right. Next, we have our public hearings. The first is a rezoning map amendment, a standard rezoning on North Harper Drive.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. We do have an application for a standard rezoning before you deny it. The location of the property, it is currently a vacant property, so it does not have an address. So it is classified as Zero, North Harper Drive. The applicant is the property owner, Charles and Cheryl Osteen, who are attendants tonight. The existing zoning is R-15 medium-density residential. The proposed zoning is R-10 medium-density residential. The acreage of the two parcels is .06 acres, or roughly 29,620 square feet. Since this is a standard rezoning, there isn't specific uses that can be contributed to this rezoning. So any use within R-10 would be allowable if rezoned, and the future land use designations for this property are medium-intensity neighborhood and natural resource and agricultural. So the subject property, like I mentioned, is currently zoned R-15 medium-density residential. Parcels to the north, west, and south are also zoned R-15 medium-density residential. The surrounding R-15 district extends to the west along Stony Mountain Road. Stony Mountain Road transitions to R-20 lower-density residential, as it continues westward into the ETJ. To the east, the parcel is bordered by R-10 medium-density residential. The parcels directly to the east make up a small planned development of 11, two-family units, 22 units in total. The R-10 district continues to the east along Stony Mountain Road until it is met by Asheville Highway and C-3 Highway Business zoning. R-10 and R-15 zoning districts are the prominent districts in this area. They work as a gradual transition between the highly commercial C-3 Highway Business and the R-20 low-density residential. You will see on the rear of the property, there is 100-year floodplain and a blue-lined stream within the boundaries of the subject property. And it's also worth mentioning that these are the last two parcels in the city limits right on North Harper, right in this area. So they are within the city limits currently. As you can see on your screen, on the left-hand side of the screen, is the uses in R-10 and R-15. As you will see, the R-10 and R-15 have the exact same permitted uses. There is one difference. R-15 allows cemeteries as a special use. So if you went before the Board of Adjustment and got a special use permit in R-15, you could have a cemetery, where in R-10, you cannot have that. Other than that, all the uses remain the same. To the right are the dimensional requirements of each district. As you would see, there is changes. The main one with R-15 is that the minimum lot size is, of course, 15,000 square feet, where in R-10, it is 10,000 square feet. As you'll see, the minimum lot width is a little bit different. The setbacks are different by about five feet, but visibly, there wouldn't be, to the naked eye, not any large change between the two dimensional requirements. As you'll see on the screen, the top-left picture is a view from the east to west across the property. Picture on the top-right is of that blue-lined stream that I had mentioned that contributes to the floodplain in that area. Bottom-left is an existing stormwater ditch that filters into the stream. And to the bottom-right picture is a view of the larger parcel that is on the...or out of the two parcels. That is the larger parcel. Basically, that stormwater ditch kind of separates the two parcels currently. So the 2030 Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map designates this parcel as medium-intensity neighborhood and natural resource agricultural. As you'll see, medium-intensity neighborhood is the prominent classification in this area. The goal of medium-intensity neighborhood is to encourage low-maintenance, high-density housing that supports neighborhood and regional activity centers and downtown, and provides a transition between commercial and single-family development. Promote walkable neighborhood design that creates attractive and functional roadway corridors and multifamily residential neighborhoods. The natural resource and agricultural designation along the rear of the property, of course, runs along the 100-year floodplain on the property. So the land development chapter of our comprehensive plan designates the parcel as preservation/enhancement area. These areas are developed areas in which few significant changes are expected, or undeveloped areas that are not considered of high priority for growth. The city should respond to development or redevelopment in these areas by maintaining and enhancing existing neighborhood character and maintaining consistency with the comprehensive plans, goals, and strategies. This rezoning is an example of Goal Land Use One, which promotes the need for infill development within these existing neighborhoods where the utilities and infrastructure are already in place and existing. North Harper Drive is an NC DOT road, and water and sewer connections are close enough to this property where they could potentially serve both properties. The population and housing chapter takes this idea a little further. It emphasizes the need to enhance and preserve older neighborhoods while still promoting infill development in these areas. Like I mentioned earlier, the next goals are bigger-picture housing up needs or visions. The first one's to encourage a wider range of housing types. Like I mentioned, this is a standard rezoning, so we don't know what is actually being proposed. But this kind of throws it out there. This is what the comprehensive plan's looking for as far as population and housing, and also Strategy 2.3 about affordable housing and multi-generational housing. However, neither one of those are directly related to this proposal, since we do not know what is actually being proposed for the site. Let's see. The next chapter is the Natural and Environmental Resource Section. The property, like I mentioned, does have 100-year floodplain at the rear of the property. Since this is a standard rezoning, we do not know the actual proposed use or layout of the site. However, if the applicants did propose to build within that 100-year floodplain, then the proposal would have to be reviewed by our...reviewed and approved by our floodplain administrator in our engineering department. The stream at the rear of the property is also considered a blue-lined stream on USGS maps. So due to this, this stream...our stream or buffer protection ordinance within our zoning ordinance does apply to this site. I will mention that there was some work done within the stream buffer area by the applicants, but the applicants are working with the planning board and...or the planning staff and the stormwater administrator to correct this issue and re-vegetate the storm...or the stream buffer. The stream buffer violation is a code compliance issue. It is actually outside the purview of the rezoning request.
Can I ask a question about that before you move on?
Yes, sir.
So nothing about this rezoning changes the environmental regulations that relate to that...the floodway that's on the back of the property?
No, sir. So it would remain as it is. The site was also once a wooded site. The site was cleared and graded prior to the rezoning application being filed. Since this is a standard rezoning, the application was not required to be reviewed by the planning board or the...I don't know why...the planning board must be on my mind tonight. The tree board...the tree board said the clearing on the site did not violate any requirements in our zoning ordinance. So they did everything that they were allowed to do by right. Cultural and historical resources, there's nothing applicable in our comprehensive plan for this project. Same thing for community facilities. Water resources, just like I mentioned, this section kind of reiterates the previously made comments. Any future development in the proposed floodplain would be reviewed by our floodplain administrator, and no development will occur within the 30-foot stream buffer. Like I mentioned also earlier, the street serving this property, North Harper Drive, is considered a local street in our comprehensive plan. So the surrounding area is exclusively made up of R-10 and R-15 zoning. R-10 and R-15 allow all the same permitted uses, with the exception of cemeteries, which is currently a special use in R-15. As far as the change conditions is concerned, and I'll go back, these next items that I'm going through is the items that City Council should consider whenever rezoning a property. So these are the main ideas that should be considered. Penn ending in 2653 is approximately 19,602 square feet, which is a conforming lot for a single-family home in the R-15 district. However, Penn ending in 3517 is approximately 10,018 square feet, which does not meet minimum lot size for the R-15 district. That parcel is considered a non-conforming lot in our zoning ordinance. When a lot is considered non-conforming, this limits the usability of the site for the owners. Even if the property owner moved around the lot lines, they would still not have enough square footage between the two lots to make two conforming lots under R-15 zoning. Public interest. The rezoning could be in the public interest. It could potentially allow for infill development in the existing neighborhood. Like I mentioned, there's water and sewer available to the site. It is a maintained road also. And effects on the natural environment, I think. I went through those pretty well. But once again, there's a 50-foot stream buffer and a 100-year floodplain protection on this property. So the planning board provided the following comprehensive plan consistency statement at their meeting on February 14th. The petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville 2030 Comprehensive Plan, based on the information provided by staff analysis and the public hearing, because medium-intensity neighborhood designation calls for single-family residential, has a primary land use, and the proposed map amendment aligns with the location listed under LU61. The planning board found that the rezoning was reasonable because the petition would be an extension of the adjacent R-10 zoning. The petition allows for both parcels to become conforming with minimum lot size for R-10. The petition creates the opportunity for compatible infill development. And lastly, this just further goes through the planning board's recommendation. The remaining aspects of the planning board's motion can be found on the screen. The planning board unanimously recommended the City Council adopt an ordinance changing the zoning designation of the subject property from R-15 to R-10. And I'm here for any questions you all may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mar. Would the property owner like to make any comments?
Good evening, all. My name is Ed Osteen. I'm the Charles of Charles and Cheryl. This is my wife, Cheryl. First, just want to tell you thank you for your consideration, and I really wanted to come and say thanks to Tyler and Ms. Terri Swan in the planning office, to Matt over there and a young gentleman named Mike that came over to the property with us and walked and kind of let us know some of the things that we need to consider. So I just want to introduce myself to you and make myself available if you have any questions for me.
Okay. Any questions?
All right. Well, thank you for your consideration.
All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to...who is present who would like to comment on this standard rezoning? Anyone present who would like to comment? Is there anyone online who would like to comment?
Mayor, there are no hands raised on the line.
All right. And we received no written comment ahead of time either, so we will close that public hearing. hearing. One discussion or a motion?
I'll do it. Madam Mayor, I move city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property pens 9569-26-2653 and 9569-26-3517 from R-15 Medium Density Residential to R-10 Medium Density Residential. Petition is found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville's 2030 Comprehensive Plan based on information from staff analysis and because the medium intensity neighborhood designation calls for single-family residential as primary land use and the proposed map amendment aligns with the locations listed under LU6.1. Also, this would be reasonable and in the public interest based on information from staff analysis in the public hearing because, first, the petition would be an extension of the adjacent R-10 zoning district; second, the petition allows for both parcels to become conforming lots, meeting the minimum lot size for the R-10 district; and third, the petition creates the opportunity for compatible infill development.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this standard rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the motion passes, and that's been taken care of. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Tyler, thank you as well.
Okay. The next item of business is a conditional zoning district rezoning on Greenville Highway for multifamily.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Present this evening on the Greenville Highway Apartments CZD. I'm going to start by noting an important element of this application that's been recognized here over the past couple of days by staff, and that is that this development, as proposed, I will be presenting the application that went to the planning board, is a byright development. The Greenville Highway Mixed Use zoning district has a different standard for the triggering of a conditional zoning district than the vast majority of our zoning districts. So a vast majority of our zoning districts trigger at the development or redevelopment of 50,000 square feet or greater, and Greenville Highway Mixed Use is triggered by a building footprint of greater than 12,000 square feet. And as you'll see, these buildings are less than that, they are below 12,000 square feet. So the CZD process that we'll be reviewing this evening is entirely voluntary. This project could move forward through a site plan review process and administrative review hearing with the planning board. So all that said, I'll be reviewing the CZD application and the process that this project has gone through to date, and I'm happy to answer any questions as we go. And this always happens to me.
Use the force.
Yeah. What am I doing wrong, Adam? There we go. Thank you. So the location of this project is 904 Greenville Highway. It is just beyond on Greenville Highway, the Spartanburg Highway and White Street intersection and commercial area. The developer's Brett Ferry, the property owner's Hunting Creek Associates, and Tamara Peacock, and the architects are the site developer. This is a zoning, rezoning request for Greenville Highway Mixed Use to Greenville Highway Mixed Use CZD, and all of the underlying zoning standards apply. Total acreage is 2.25 acres for multifamily. The project as presented at the planning board was for 80 total units and three four-story buildings. Each building is approximately a little over 9,000 square feet, and the total density as presented was 35.6 units per acre. There is no density cap in Greenville Highway Mixed Use, and the future land use designation is High Intensity Neighborhood. As a component of the conditional rezoning process, a neighborhood compatibility meeting was held on November 15th of 2021. There were 22 in-person attendees and six virtual participants. You can see the variety of questions and concerns that were discussed during the meeting, and those minutes for that meeting are also available that fully convey what was discussed and talked about. As I noted, the current land use and zoning for this parcel is Greenville Highway Mixed Use. You can see on the map here how that relates to some of the surrounding property. This is at the edge, the front edge of the Greenville Highway Mixed Use zoning district. Zoning district extends along Greenville Highway to the, basically to the boundary of our city and the ETJ, but gets its start right here on the corner of Chadwick. You can see across the street, C3 Commercial. We have some planned commercial development in the area, and then moving along Greenville Highway are R-15 and R-20 single-family residential zoning districts. Some site images. The first on the top left there is along Greenville Highway looking towards Chadwick, and then the top right is on Chadwick looking back towards Greenville Highway. You've got the corner of Greenville and Chadwick, an interior site image. Talk a little bit in a moment about what was previously on the site, some additional images of the site itself and some of the tree coverage, tree canopy that exists currently. You can see some existing concrete pads as a result of the previous development on the site. Bottom, bottom right there is the, is a wet weather conveyance that's on the eastern boundary of the property. So kind of eastern is going up Chadwick Avenue. So previously, this site held a single-family home and a mobile home park. The zoning, Greenville Highway Mixed Use zoning was adopted October 9th of 2003, and the mobile home park existed at least, we did the research that we could, through 1984. I know that the residential home on the property was there up to a few years ago. That was demoed after I started with the city, so within the last five to six years, I believe. And it was vacant at the time, had deteriorated. Future land use for this area is High Intensity Neighborhood. You can see, similar to the zoning districts, kind of the proximity and other future land use designations of surrounding property. Across the street from Chadwick Avenue is a neighborhood activity center, and that dotted black line on the map is an activity node, which is sort of a further designation of a key point within the city for commercial development and commercial resources for the community. High intensity neighborhood along Greenville Highway, and then medium and intensity and low intensity in the adjacent neighborhoods. So to talk a little bit about the nature of High Intensity Neighborhood and what that designation means, but also generally comprehensive plan consistency, you'll see on the screen, and I'll click ahead, we have our eight chapters associated with the comprehensive plan here listed. Future land use designation is High Intensity Neighborhood. That is to encourage low maintenance, high density housing that supports neighborhood and regional activity centers and downtown and provides a transition between commercial and single-family development, further promotes walkable neighborhood design, that creates attractive and functional roadway corridors and multifamily residential neighborhoods. The locations for this kind of, for this particular designation are, you know, existing and planned high-density housing neighborhoods, priority infill development areas. This is a priority infill development area where high-density development is desirable and or expected, along boulevards and major thoroughfares, which Greenville Highway is considered, and in neighborhoods near downtown. Some of the development guidelines that are associated with High Intensity Neighborhood, eight or more units per gross acre. The, there are some additional requirements of at least 60% open space in new residential developments. Architectural guidelines to encourage compatibility between different land uses. Greenville Highway Mixed Use does have design standards associated with it, and you'll see some of the results of that in the, what's the word I'm looking for? Elevations, thank you, of the apartments and multifamily dwellings. As it relates to land use and development, one of the things that, in reviewing that I wanted to highlight, because we often talk a lot about the full nature of the comprehensive plan, it has eight chapters, there's a lot of information in there. In the land use and development chapter, the introduction to that chapter notes that the framework for land use policies and decision-making in this element in that chapter reflect the vision statements, principles, and strategies of all the elements of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. So it is an effort to take what is in those other chapters and translate that into land use and development guidance. So, and it's in that chapter that you find the designation of priority infill areas and, which is to encourage infill development along with the design, the development guidelines that I talked about a little bit earlier. So as you go through the other chapters, you see, you know, a broader range of information. Some of it is even guidance that the city would pursue in developing new zoning ordinances or standards for the community. So I'll note that kind of the terminology here and the information that you're seeing is reflective of what each of those chapters sort of sets out as its purpose. Click through those, I'm not going to read them for you, but I'm happy to return to those at any point. So the general rezoning standards, Tyler mentioned these. These are, the general rezoning standards are established by the zoning code, and as the, along with comprehensive plan consistency, which is called out, these standards in the zoning ordinance are called out as how to assess whether or not a rezoning is appropriate. So whether, and to the extent for compatibility, the proposed amendment is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the property. We've noted some of the characteristics of this rezoning request, which include the wide variety of uses in the immediate area, including commercial, residential, multifamily, close proximity to major commercial intersection at Spartanburg Highway and Greenville Highway, South Main Street. These parcels, this parcel is subject to design standards. There are no four-story structures in the immediate proximity to the site. Changed conditions, things that may be changing or have changed. Note that the NC DOT improvements plan for Spartanburg Greenville Highway and South Main Street and White Street are one of the few DOT projects that's moving forward, and commercial development in the area, Spartanburg Highway, Greenville Highway, and South Main Street represents a major commercial node for the city in the immediate vicinity of downtown, and we've seen concentrated commercial investment, development, and redevelopment in that area. Public interest, it is taking advantage of existing infill. It does front on Greenville Highway and addition of new units. Public facilities, so whether and the extent to which adequate public facilities and services such as water supply, wastewater treatment, police and fire, and transportation are available to support the proposed development. There were a variety of concerns around Chadwick Avenue, which did trigger staff to require a TIA. The development on its own did not trigger our TIA standards. So this, the zoning ordinance allows for staff to require a TIA in situations where impacts to local infrastructure may exceed their ability to handle that. And Jonathan is on, Jonathan is, Jonathan, I'm forgetting Jonathan's. Guy, thank you. You'd think Guy would be a name that would easily be remembered. Jonathan is on and is available to speak or answer questions about that TIA report. We'll talk a little more about that later on. You know, effect on natural environment, there is a proximity to the floodplain, although there is no blue line stream on this site and no floodplain. The site will exceed one acre of disturbance and will trigger our stormwater ordinance as a result. You gotta click on the screen again. Now I know what to say. There we go. Thanks. So the draft comprehensive plan consistency statement, you'll see here, this petition, this is in the staff report, it's found to be consistent with the City of Hendersonville 2030 Comp Plan because the High Intensity Neighborhood Designation calls for multifamily residential as a primary land use, and the proposed site plan aligns with all development guidelines listed in LU7.4. There are then a series of draft rationale for approval. These are also in the staff report. I'm not necessarily going to go through these and going to click through, and there is a draft rationale for denial. This is the site plan that was reviewed by city staff and by the planning board. As we noted earlier, there are three four-story buildings proposed. The original project concept was for 80 vertical units, 56 two-bedroom, two-bath, and 24 one-bedroom, one-bath totaling 117,600 square feet of finished floor area. It is all residential, and it had 80 parking spaces associated with it. You can see the drive access is located on Chadwick Avenue with Greenville Highway sort of on the, it is on the western side of this. North is true north on this site plan, so north is up. These are some of the elevations of that original submission. This is the four-story. This elevation is along Chadwick Avenue, so the building, I think this was the, well, the buildings were similar, so I'm not sure that this represents, this represents the far eastern building on Chadwick Avenue, so the one that was beyond the drive entrance. This is a rear elevation, so what you would have seen from the parking lot. Side elevation, I think this is also Chadwick Avenue. This is the front-facing, the building that would have fronted on Greenville Highway. In reviewing the site plan, community development staff, planning department, found that the site plan accompanying the petition meets the standards established by the zoning ordinance for Greenville Highway. We had a couple of compliance elements that can be addressed moving forward with final site plan. We did include a recommended condition for additional architectural detail at the corner of the building on the Chadwick Avenue Greenville Highway side. The stormwater and floodplain administrators both reviewed, does meet the standards of the ordinances that they oversee. And a couple of notes there that the impervious area on the site will increase from less than half an acre to over 1.3 acres of impervious surface. The site does include a natural drainage, the wet weather conveyance, I showed an image of that earlier, and they had recommended conditions for open green space being used for bioswales and bio-retention and rain gardens, and that the existing natural drainage way along the eastern boundary of the parcel be preserved at a minimum, but should be improved. City engineer had some series of comments that you'll see there. These are able to be addressed at final site plan and did not have any recommended conditions for the site. Comparable review by our fire marshal, some final site plan comments, but no recommended And then our transportation consultant did review and assisted in establishing the parameters of the TIA. The project will generate 434 daily trips, which is below our threshold. Our threshold is either 100 peak hour trips or 1,000 daily trips. Jonathan, you know, indicated that the TIA- Jonathan, you know, indicated that the TIA provides a reasonable assessment of the traffic. The one condition that was recommended for inclusion was the shifting of the driveway as far back on the site as possible from the intersection with Greenville Highway to allow for future improvements to the intersection. The development didn't trigger a need for mitigation measures at the driveway, but it did, you know, there were reasons why moving that drive back would prevent conflict in the future. And I know I've said his name a few times now, but Jonathan Guy is available to answer questions about that. Mr. Wooton was reviewed also. He included a recommendation similarly related to the transportation of including a right-of-way dedication along Chadwick Avenue. That spelled out here for an additional seven and a half feet from the center line of Chadwick Avenue to provide future right-of-way. The current right-of-way width, I think on Chadwick is 30 feet. Our standard local street now includes a 45-foot right-of-way width. Tree Board had a recommended condition, which was just to protect the trees proposed for preservation according to the standards established in the zoning ordinance for trees, which will be credited towards the total on a site. They're not asking for tree credits, but, so the Tree Board is asking to apply that standard. The planning board took up this plan, this development application at their meeting on February 14th. They did vote to recommend denial as it was submitted, and the statement that Mr. Blatt made in making the recommendation was that he did not find the petition to be reasonable in the public interest based on the information that staff analysis, due to the density and the current lack of adequate parking. You can see that it was a 5-1 vote and did pass. And I am available for questions.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, maybe I do. Okay. Do you know if there are any future DOT projects that would kind of come into that setback area?
That were, the additional setback, the additional right-of-way request? So that's a local street that is within our purview. So if there were-
Greenville Highway.
Not Greenville Highway, Chadwick Avenue.
Yes.
I'm sorry. So the right-of-way request is along Chadwick Avenue. No right-of-way request is being made along Greenville Highway.
Other questions? Mr. Berry, would you like to make any comments or anything at this point?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd just like to say that we've appreciated all the comments and feedback that we've received from elected officials as well as members of the community. And, you know, we will, Tamara will be submitting a revised proposal for consideration if she has the ability to be able to come up before council. And we've tried to move the proposal to meet some of the concerns that have been voiced by members of council as well as members of the public in regards to the density, in regards to height, and regards to parking. But I would like to turn that over to Tamara, if that's okay. Thank you.
Can you go ahead and put lots of your thoughts in? Hi there, Tamara Peacock, architect. You guys probably remember me being on First Avenue and now the building that burned. I'm on 105 North Main now, and I just wanted to express the gratitude of this community and how everybody just really helped me. I dropped everything and got my phones and my internet, and so it was, I can't tell you how much I just love Hendersonville. So what we did, we took into account what everyone was saying. You know, people said it's a little too massive, it's, you know, dense for the site. People were worried about traffic and the driveway being too close to the intersection and the cars stacking and that. And I think probably at some future time, they might actually be a turn lane from Chadwick because I think the morning the cars stack there. And so what we did was we worked with staff to talk about creating a right-of-way, you know, along that way, and the seven and a half feet is actually the minimum on the building that's towards the north. As you get to the corner, it'll, the right-of-way will actually widen up over there, and so that we could respond to that need about, you know, being able to turn onto Greenville Highway. You also see like the bulb out in the sidewalk with the curvilinear wall, and there was some mention in the code about creating this corner feature. So the idea there was to do like a tiered stone wall with lighting and try to create like an artistic element that went with the building, and it would be an opportunity for some signage for the project, but it would also create a seating area. We're putting some benches along that sidewalk. So we're trying to go back to that, that goal of the comp plan of, you know, trying to be a walkable community and provide that housing that we so sorely need. And so I really feel like the way that the architecture is broken down with the different roof lines, that we do relate to the houses. I mean, it is what it is. It's a multifamily project, and so there's a lot we can do, and we've done, you know, quite a bit. We're creating bicycle maintenance areas to promote, you know, that. You know, the green space with the drainage, because, you know, as many of us know, when it rains really hard, that area tends to accumulate a lot of water, and the last thing we want to do is contribute to that. So the developers have gone beyond, you know, what the code says. So they cut the units back to 70 from 80 on this site plan, and we have 21 additional parking spaces beyond what the code requires. Because, you know, as many people know, as much as we want to be that walkable community, we're really not quite there yet. And it's going to take a bit of time to get, I know we're going to do that last part of Main Street, and we're going to upgrade those sidewalks and stuff. And I'm sure people too that work in service industries would be able to afford to live in a project like this and walk to work, and we'll get there. But these are the kinds of projects that I really feel like we need to, you know, encourage, you know, for, I mean, I can tell you in my own office, I've been trying to hire people, and I've had people, you know, take the job and then say, "I can't find a place to live." So, you know, we really, I'm sure this would be a wonderful project, and we're very committed to it. They have a wonderful reputation and have done many successful projects, so we're not, you know, trusting a first-time company to be the development, you know, entity. So, anyway, I hope you'll support it. Did we put the elevation on there with the step-down? Okay. So what it, the way that the buildings are designed now, you have the larger building on the corner, but the side buildings are kind of book-matched, so the four-story steps down to a three-story before it goes to the neighboring buildings. So that was, you know, our solution to bring down the mass of it. And if you have any questions, that's-
Any questions from Ms. Peacock or Mr. Berry? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do still need to continue with the public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
Thank you. We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone present here who wishes to speak regarding this rezoning? Anyone here who wishes to speak? Is there anyone online seeking recognition to speak?
Mayor, there are two hands raised online.
Okay. If you would have those people mute one after the other.
Yes, ma'am. Sandy, you've been asked to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
The architect and the person representing the business-
Could we get your name and address, please, for the question?
Okay, Sandra Williams. I live on 309 Chadwick Avenue. I grew up there, and I live there now in the same house where I grew up. I appreciate that they want to make changes, but if you've been out to see the property and picture the apartment buildings there, you would understand the concerns. First of all, if they reduce the parking, it's still, most people these days and times have two cars, so it's not going to accommodate people with two cars. I'm opposed to the zoning change. Another concern of mine is if there are going to be families living in these apartments, there are going to be school buses picking up and dropping off children six times a day. Those buses are going to have to stop near those apartments. So safety for family, for children is a real concern of mine. Also, the number of people living and working there, these, there are going to be people coming and going all day long, even at night. This includes adults and teenagers who are going to and from work. So that is part of the problem with the property. On the corner where it is, because there's traffic right there, there's the traffic, I'm concerned about increased traffic on both ends of Chadwick. And there will be neighborhoods where people will be cutting through these neighborhoods to get, to go around Chadwick, to go around the traffic light at Greenville Highway, and that's going to increase the traffic, not only on Chadwick, but on, at the Spartanburg Highway, which, you know, across from Chick-fil-A, which is already very dangerous. The traffic has increased immensely there. Let me see. Also, when the rain does come and the streets flow on both ends of the street, there's no way that that many people are going to be able to get out and in to go wherever they want to go. Also, the exit, proposed exit, exit option, exit is going to be onto Chadwick near the light. I don't know how that's going to work when you have people going and coming all day long. Another concern I have at this point was walking to downtown and to the grocery stores. I don't know how many people walk downtown and to the grocery stores in November through March when it's cold and rainy and windy, and we have snow. Plus, most people nowadays use cars to go to the grocery stores. Traffic is very heavy at the intersection beyond Chadwick there on the Greenville Highway, and I read about a DOT study, and that, they're going to do some, they've recommended some work in that area, but there is a lot of traffic coming and going, and there's no safe place to walk to town at this point. You can try. The traffic is coming in so many different directions. My husband and I, we crossed way old up, toured, passed Chick-fil-A and walked down that direction rather than trying to cross in that intersection. I don't know of any other four-story apartment buildings in Henderson, in the City of Hendersonville like this one. It's going to affect the neighborhoods above Chadwick, Narva Road, Lawson Road. There are several other housing developments above that. People are going to be cutting off the Greenville Highway farther up the road and go through their neighborhoods to get to Chadwick, both directions. So that's going to increase the traffic on Chadwick. What else?
South Rock.
What?
South Rock.
Oh, yeah, and what?
South Rock.
I know.
Motor circles.
Oh, yeah, and there's a lot of noise from the bar.
It's not family-friendly.
It's not family-friendly. Motorcycles and-
Two nights a week, they party.
Two nights a week, they party. It's, the traffic on Chadwick has increased immensely, and if you, like I said, if you visit the property, you're going to, it's hard to imagine an apartment complex of that size on that small amount of property. I know that housing is an issue. I'm not sure that everyone who comes to work for Hendersonville wants to live in the city. I can understand that. I think most people nowadays live in the county and drive into the city. My concern about the city is it's changing. You don't want it to become too much, well, too, I don't know, too much traffic. And people now, I think, are moving to smaller towns where there is no traffic or very little traffic, and then when they want to come to the city, Hendersonville, they drive into the city. So that is my concern, my concern. Thank you very much for hearing that. Also, the planning board talked about it and discussed it for, a lot of people, about four hours, three, four hours, because I listened to it, I was there, I was online, and they discussed it, and they still came to the conclusion that it was not appropriate for, of that apartment complex to be built on that corner. What is it, five to one?
Yeah.
Five to one against. So I urge, urge you to follow what the planning board has suggested, because they talked about it a lot for a long period of time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next person?
Lynn Williams, you've been asked to unmute.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Chadwick Avenue, thank you for your time. I'm going to try and, I want to thank my mom for speaking. As she said, our family's been here for about 70 years, so we've seen a lot of changes from a dirt road surrounded by wooded lots to what we have now today. I wanted to also point out that this process started at the neighborhood compatibility meeting with tens of participants, all voting opposed to this. There was one person in favor, and that person owns a vacant lot, a commercial lot, so he doesn't work or live here. That was the only one fully in favor comment. But the 30-plus households directly impacted have all said that they do not want this project. It's too dense. I do appreciate that. The developer did hear us and reduced the density. We ask that the developer please consider going ahead and reducing it to three levels across the board. That would be a great compromise. Also, as far as the planning board meeting went, in order to submit the two-minute public comment, we had to wait four hours until that opportunity, so a lot of residents were present as well as on Zoom, and they had to sign off and leave after waiting from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM just for a two-minute comment. The TIA review clearly states that there was no pedestrian or bicycle studied as part of that study, so I don't think we can clearly say whether or not it's a good neighborhood for this. Also, the traffic impact, I'm not sure if it clearly reflected the traffic counts that we received, which was 2,000 cars a day on Chadwick Avenue. What I heard was this will add 434 trips, so that will potentially be an increase of traffic by 25% per day, which is a lot for us. If you reference the Tree Board meeting, the first comment they said was, if we were going to protect, if we were focusing on tree protections, then we would not develop this lot at all. The Bowen Study that you will be reviewing at the council retreat this upcoming week or so clearly states there's a desperate need for affordable housing. This is not affordable housing. This market rate housing is currently, there's current vacancy in the community as referenced in the study, so there isn't a need for this particular project. The externalized costs are being forced upon the people who have been here paying taxes to cover the roads, emergency services, public safety with flooding and traffic, especially speeding. I've reached out to the HPC and the planning department to discuss the historic nature of our end of Chadwick Avenue. Our neighborhood was planted in 1905, and our home was built in 1935, so our neighborhood has, has this particular character. And we asked for this consideration of that character when we developed Chadwick Avenue. I've requested wildlife crossing signs because we continue to see brutal deaths of animals, but currently we have not gotten those wildlife crossing signs. I'm still working on that. This development is directly connected to a floodplain, so the culvert on the opposite side of the culvert to this project is the floodplain, directly- side of the culvert to this project is the floodplain, directly there. And I see that the impervious surface will be increased from a half acre to 1.3 acres. That will have a definite impact. I remember in the planning board meeting, it discussed that there wasn't a specific plan for stormwater. This is a very big concern. Now that they have moved the road over to the culvert, the big concern is that when that floods, if people have to evacuate or if emergency services have to come, they're not going to be able to get in on that road right there, because it will be flooded at the culvert. This is a very serious issue, and I hope you hear me on this. Try to wrap it up here. Thank you for your time. When looking at each of your residences, I wonder how you would feel with a four-story, three, four-story, three-story buildings on your block with 100 extra cars on your street. This feels like class warfare. We've got the residents working to cover all the externalized costs and previous taxes invested in the character and quality of our neighborhood. This developer is from South Carolina, someone who does not live here, and he will decide the fate of, fate of our quaint, safe neighborhood. He has more say, weight, voice than tax-paying residents who have lived on Chadwick for 70 years. We are the ones who have worked together to maintain a peaceful, charming character. It feels biased that all the people who feel, who will be making these decisions about increasing the density on our street from 18 families to 80 families, that's four times the density. None of you live here on our street, none of you are neighbors, and the problems and the externalized costs, we will have to pay. The developer is also not our neighbors. Pushing the problems onto the neighborhood makes you a part of the problem. We ask for solutions and smart development. The planning board and the neighbors clearly are not for this. Given how the council has been voting in favor of developments, my concern is that Members Simpson, Bullock, and Hensley will once again disregard the concerns of the majority to serve the interest of the privileged few. Councilmember Hensley nominated to marry Peacock to the planning board. If there is a conflict of interest between this Peacock and any member of the council, I ask for you to recuse yourself from this vote. I understand that this is just sort of, that they can just move ahead with this project as it is, but what I want to ask you is, you know, you don't have to give it your blessing as it is. You know, we could say, "Thank you for adjusting these, thank you for considering us," but the council does not have to give their blessing. And Councilwoman Simpson, I'm specifically speaking to you, and I ask you to please hear us as the residents. I believe that is pretty much it, besides that one point that my mother made, that, and also heard Mr. Holloway say, "There are no four-story buildings in this surrounding area. This does not fit the character." Please, please, hear the comments of 30, 40, 50 of our residents, with not a single resident in favor of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is anyone else seeking recognition?
Mayor, at this time, there are no other hands raised online.
Okay, and we received no written comment, so we will close this public hearing. Discussion or emotion?
I would just like to address a couple of concerns, and I think they're fair, especially to people that were at the planning, the very long planning board meeting. And that is, through the process of getting to here tonight, we have learned that the standards that were discussed at the planning board, there were some mistakes that were made. And in getting to tonight, we have to honor what our ordinances say, what our laws say, and some of those standards that were debated and discussed at the planning board were just wrong. So, in getting here tonight, our developer has made a good faith effort to change his original plan to meet some of the concerns. And while I recognize that the residents who are watching and listening, in particular the ones who have spoken, have some very serious concerns and may view this as the city council capitulating to that, the reality is that in this circumstance, I hate to use a cliche, our hands are somewhat tied with regard to what the law actually is for that particular piece of property. So, if you have concerns, you certainly can feel free to email council members about our vote tonight, but I want to indicate to the members of the public who are listening that there, there has been some changes to how we have to interpret this request that we have learned since the planning meeting and up to tonight. And I would ask you to understand that in our vote, and certainly, you can, you're welcome to email me, and we can explain it more. So, I just wanted to explain that aspect so that people who are watching will understand that what we're talking about tonight is viewed a little bit differently than what happened at the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Boe.
Other comments? It just is a very awkward situation for everyone involved. That we didn't learn of the situation earlier, but as Mr. Smith said, we do have to abide by our current ordinances and development guidelines and looking at those in, in light of the proposal. So, that, that is what we have to consider tonight.
So, I know that Lou mentioned this at the beginning of his presentation, but I wonder if maybe we could ask Lou to come back up and give a brief explanation of what "by right" means, and kind of how we got to this point, and why is our vote different than what was happening at the planning board, and just clarify a little bit more for the members of the community?
Absolutely.
In particular, would you address the Greenville Highway mixed-use?
Greenville Highway, yes, absolutely. So, there are a variety of zoning districts within the city. I don't know the total number, but a, well on, 90% of those zoning districts include a trigger that no development or redevelopment that exceeds 50,000 square feet can proceed without a rezoning to conditional zoning district. And that rezoning process is the neighborhood compatibility, tree board, planning board process that we're all familiar with and which the developers for the Greenville Highway apartment project went through. That was guidance that was given by the department to the developer that was incorrect. The Greenville Highway mixed-use district does not have a trigger for 50,000-square-foot development or redevelopment. CZD is not triggered in Greenville Highway by that threshold. Within the Greenville Highway District, and this has always been the case, since the time that the Greenville Highway District was adopted by council in 2003 and following various amendments that have occurred to that district, the standard which triggers a CZD is the exceeding of a 12,000-square-foot footprint. So, there can be as many 12,000-square-foot footprint four-story buildings on a site as long as they meet the other standards in the zoning ordinance. So, you all are very, very familiar with that 50,000-square-foot trigger, because it often comes up with many of the rezonings that we're addressing. In this case, the standards of the Greenville Highway Mixed-Use District are not tied to that and are only triggered by that footprint, this site and the proposed development, both the one that was presented at planning board and the one that the developers have in good faith presented this evening in an effort to address some of those issues, meet the standards of that zoning district, and only require an administrative review. They do not require rezoning. I don't want to keep talking, because the more I talk, the more, I know that's a complicated element. I think the key thing is that in most of our districts, the 50,000-square-foot is the trigger. In Greenville Highway and in a few other districts, it is not the trigger. That was an oversight on our department early on in the process.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Are you ready for a motion? There is a blank here, list of conditions and agreed to by the applicant. Has that been agreed to, that list of conditions?
Yes, it has. The list of conditions is included on the site plan, and the city attorney also has an ordinance with all of the conditions that were discussed and agreed to by the developer and property owner. The one, the date on the site plan that was presented today is March 2nd, I believe. There's a, there's a blank in your motion for...
What goes in the blank?
March 2nd.
Okay. Thank you. Take this one?
I read one.
It's so long, fine.
That's right, I chose the other one.
I move the city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, pin 9568-92-1924, from Greenville Highway Mixed-Use to Greenville Highway Mixed-Use CZD, Conditional Zoning District, based on the site plan and listed, list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated March 2nd, 2022, and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained therein, and the following permitted uses, residential dwellings, multifamily. Don't need to read number two, right? Because there's nothing, there's nothing, no additional act, like, condition. Okay. The petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville's 2030 comprehensive plan, based on the information from the staff analysis, and because the high-intensity neighborhood designation calls for multifamily residential as a primary land use, and the proposed site plan aligns with all applicable development guidelines listed under LU 7.4. We find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because the petition is located in a priority infill area, which recommends redevelopment of underutilized lots. I didn't realize there was so much on this page. The petition proposes compatible infill development, the petition is located on a major thoroughfare, the petition provides walkable design in close proximity to goods and services, the petition proposes to place buildings and drives where existing land disturbing activities have previously occurred, the petition proposes to provide street trees along sidewalks, and the petition is proposing to provide bicycle parking facilities.
Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor of this conditional zoning change, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the conditional zoning is approved. Thank you. New Business, Presentation of North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, Grant Application for Hendersonville Police Department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I am Blair Mahendrew, Police Chief. So, tonight, I come before you to ask for the council's approval in allowing the city to accept a grant, if awarded, for Governor's Highway Safety. So, I will run through this very quickly. This should be brief and hopefully not controversial, but when I first came here, I've been talking to you about crashes since, since I've come here as chief. And so, here's some of the data. We've had over 12,000 crashes in a five-year period from 2016 to 2021. We, you know, we've already had 216 crashes that we responded to year-to-date, and that's just January and February. And so, when you look at the bullet about rankings, the higher the number, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
216 crashes?
We've responded to 216.
In two months? That's like, car hit something.
Yes.
I mean, this is not like a traffic ticket. Car has hit something already?
That's correct. Someone has called us 216 times to report a crash.
Those are reported crashes. You don't know how many people.
Right, yeah. Sorry, I just, I was, okay.
Yeah, so, when rankings, we want to be 99, 100, right? We don't want to be up in the top, top areas, but that's what the state kind of says where we're at. So, we want to drive those numbers down to the bottom of the, the list of 100. But this continues to be an issue for the city. It is one of my number-one priorities to tackle. I don't want to come to you in five years and report the same information, right? So, we need to do something. Yes, Lindsey?
Is unrestrained just meaning they didn't have their seatbelt on?
Seatbelt or child restraint, any, any passenger in a vehicle that is not properly restrained. So, we are partnering with Governor's Highway Safety. So, the Governor's Highway Safety Program is a statewide program that is designed to reduce crashes and the severity of crashes through enforcement, through education. They have several different goals. A lot of them are restrain drivers, DWI, speed. Those are the main areas of focus. And so, they, they do this statewide by providing grant funding to agencies to be able to staff personnel for the sole purpose of enforcing traffic issues, speed and complaints and crashes. So, that is a purpose of that program. So, what we, what they offer is a three-year grant. So, I say it's a three-year grant, but we have to reapply every year, right? So, but most people that get approved the first year, get approved multiple years. I think they do it that way, in case we fail to comply with some of the conditions of it, they could, they could pull the rest of the funding. But it is an 85, 75, 50, zero grant. So, the first year, they pay for 85%. The local match year is 15%, and then it goes increasingly more and more on us until at year four and beyond, it is 100% our cost. They will pay for equipment. We own the equipment after, after the three-year grant is over with. We could sell it, we could do whatever we want with it. It is ours to keep at that point. The grant, the personnel that we, that we are approved in the grant have to only work on traffic-related stuff. So, if we pull them to do other things, they go on vacation, they're, they're in training, they're not getting reimbursed by the grant. So, we have to have these people dedicated to that purpose only. So, that doesn't mean they can't respond to a 911 call, but the purpose of this is they want them focused on traffic stuff and not doing, you know, not us just using this to get additional people. So, what we're asking for in the grant is for GHSP to fund two police officers, two vehicles, and all the accompanying equipment, equipment. That grant, if awarded, comes October 1st. It equals $256,000 total. Our impact, on our budget, would be $38,000 for the first year. And so, that, that number is very high the first year, because of vehicles and equipment. I think I've told you all before, it's about $130,000 for the first year for a police officer, because we're buying a vehicle and guns and tasers and uniforms and all that sort of stuff. The third and fourth year, the number is much lower, because it's just salary and benefits at that point. I don't have those figures for you right now, but the, I think the salary, the base salary that they're paying right now is about 43.5, and then benefits on top of that, so, you know, 75% of that next year and 50% the year after would be what we would ask. So, so we are, again, this is an, an effort we're trying to do. This is the third time that I've applied for a grant with GHSP, have been successful in the past. I, I feel very confident, as best I can, that we would get at least one police officer. I'm, I'm crossing my fingers and I'm, I'm kissing up to GHSP as much as I can to try and be favorable for us to get two officers. I will say, then, in western North Carolina, there aren't a lot of agencies that are taking advantage of GHSP, and, and the unrestrained driving, driver numbers are much, the percentages are much higher in western North Carolina. So, I hope those things work in our favor, and, and they will, you know, help us start a traffic safety unit, and then we would, you know, staff this and really start trying to tackle this problem. So, that's all that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, what sort of activities would these officers be doing to be proactive, to prevent accidents from happening? I mean, we can respond to them all day long, but what sort of things will they do, aside from just being out, which of course will slow some people down, but what else can they be doing?
Well, one thing that we're going to be doing is trying to work with the high school through the, the driver's training program and teach younger kids... We are, recently, we're, we're, we're working with a company that is going to provide crash data for us, so we're, you know, for free, we'll be able to map where our crashes are happening and focus our efforts when and where the, the highest times of these crashes are occurring, so we can, you know, address those areas. And so, we look at major contributing factors. So, if it's usually inattention, it's probably about 35% of the contributing factor in most crashes, and, and we'll look at those things and, and figure out that at 64 and Dana Road, at Wednesdays at 3:00 PM, 3:00 to 5:00 is the most likely time there'll be crashes. There's a lot of studies that, you know, the number of tickets we write have no impact on crime or traffic, but the amount of people that we stop, the amount, more people that see blue lights or police presence does have an impact on that. So, we will really focus our efforts in those areas. And we, of course, respond to traffic complaints that when people say, hey, I've got speeding in my, in this block or my neighborhood, we'll address those areas as well. But, we really do want to be proactive, and, and a large part of what these folks will do will be responding to crashes, just because we have so many, and until we can tamp those numbers down, you know. I'm hoping that I can reallocate a couple additional officers from, from positions to help maybe bolster this traffic unit. Instead of having two, maybe we'll have four people on it, and that would really help us. Because again, there, you know, there's 168 hours in a week, and two, two folks only cover 80, right? So, a little bit more, but that's about it. So, there'll be a lot of times they're not even here. So, trying to really focus when crashes are happening and, and impact the areas that, that these crashes are happening most often.
Thank you.
I have a couple comments. One, I can't think of a better use of public funds than improving overall health and safety of our community.
Mm-hmm.
And as far as financial aspect too, because we live in a region with higher trash, or crash data, then that does increase people's automobile insurance and those types of things too. One thing that I was wondering is, the, I don't suspect all the crashes are teen drivers. I suspect they're from a different age demographic. And is there a way to, like, reach out to primary care physicians, that type of thing in the community to address just cognitive impairment, medication impairment, you know, ways of kind of reaching out with our aging population, medication management, that type of thing that could impair their cognitive function to drive? So, those are just some additional comments.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, there is a process by which we can have drivers reexamined through, through the state. That doesn't have to come from us, it can come from physicians. I've not reached out to physicians, and I'd have to really figure out how we would do that, but it's certainly something that we would, we would promote. I think what I've, my experience is that most people that are aging, you know, sometimes through Alzheimer's or things like that, their families ultimately end up taking the keys from them and keeping them from having the ability to drive. But, you know, I was talking to my mother yesterday, and she's sort of getting into that area, and, and, you know, her answer was, well, if they take my license, I'm just going to keep driving anyway. And so, we, we see them, I've seen a lot of that over, over the years that they, you know.
One of the things I used to do for my patients, we had an event once a year, it was called a brown bag event, and we had a couple local pharmacists come to my office. And our patients could bring in a bag essentially of all their medications, and, because polypharmacy is a big issue with the aging population, and it does affect their cognitive ability. And, you know, it was great because they learned a lot about their medications, and then there were some overlaps and things like that that we could just maybe, I don't know, use to help us.
Well, we could work with physicians to, to really do that. I know there'll be a lot of, maybe some pushback, I would expect, from, for HIPAA and things like that. But if we can get physicians to be a little bit, you know, proactive.
Just more advocacy for them on that aspect, not necessarily control or regulatory, but, you know, talking to them and talking about, to their families when those become issues.
Yeah, and I will say, I don't have the data on ages of, of crash participants right now. Some of the stuff is, we, you know, with this new software, we'll be able to pull a little bit at more and, and then really figure out, is it, is it teenagers, is it older drivers, is it really everybody? And so, once we get a little bit more data, we'll be a lot more driven in our approach to, to respond to this.
I can share one aspect. So, I am aware of parent that you're trying to see limit their driving. It costs $500, you go to Morganton, and that's where you, I don't know what the group is, but down there's where you, they run through some type of a course, and they determine whether or not a person should still be driving. So, I don't know if there's any way to get something like that in, I mean, Morganton's not that far away, but when you're trying to get an elderly parent there, it's a lot further away. And certainly, that's not a price that the average family can come close to affording. But if there were, I mean, obviously, this is not part of the grant, but if there were somewhere in Western North Carolina that had a track, whatever this is, that's in Morganton, where you could easily take your parent and say, okay, mom, you're going to get in the wheel, behind the wheel, and you're going to drive this, and they're going to tell you whether or not you should be on the road driving, even if you still have your license. I think that would be something to advocate for, for Western North Carolina, because there are a lot of elderly people here that probably need to see that in front of them to realize, like, I really shouldn't be driving, you know, when you go, whatever this course is like. So, that's my personal experience with that.
Yeah, I suspect you'll get a lot of pushback if we do that, but it's something to think about. You know, when I get to that position, I'll be that person pushing back, because I, I don't want to, you know, getting to the point where you, you're not allowed to drive anymore is a really tough decision. But, but we could certainly explore, I'm not aware of what that place is in Morganton, but I will.
Talk to you.
I'll look at it and see if we can, you know. Again, the whole idea is that we really find what the problem, what's causing the problem and, and try to solve some of that and really drive these numbers down, because Jennifer's right, we're all paying more automobile insurance, just, you know, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of injuries or fatalities really, but there's property damage that, you know, I mean, you know, now in the state, if it's anything damaged less than $1,000, it's not reportable. Well, there's no damage on a car now that's not $1,000 or more. I mean, it's just, it's kind of an old rule, but, you know, things are, the environment's changing, and we just really need to. So, hopefully, we'll get awarded this grant and, and really jumpstart our traffic safety program.
Nice work. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, we do need a motion, and it, if, if I may read a motion, and then someone can regurgitate it, that, City Council, please move to adopt a resolution to appro, to approve the application as presented, and to direct staff to prepare the resolution for the mayor's signature.
Like to make that motion?
I got it.
Oh, good. Because I missed some of that. I'm a visual person, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is, is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion?
Oh, we're just going to take John's motion?
No, I thought Lindsay made the motion.
No.
You said you.
He's going to do it. I said he would do it because I missed words, so you do it.
No, he read it, all you.
No, I didn't, that was John read it.
Yeah, John read it.
Oh, we can do that? Sure?
We can do that?
Yeah, let's go for it.
So moved.
Yeah, you moved the, the motion that he read.
Well, then, so moved.
I thought that's what you were saying over there. Sorry.
Okay.
I didn't know we could do that.
I did too.
Okay.
We'll get you reading them more often.
All right.
You're reading a motion again.
No, no, I'll just move, John.
Okay. Any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion that you heard, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Okay, can get that underway. Yeah. Next. Seventh Avenue Visioning Project Update.
Steve, again, thanks again for having me tonight. There we go. So, today, I'm just going to talk real briefly about the Seventh Avenue Visioning and Branding process. You don't have to read it, I can kind of read through. So, just a little bit of background on the Seventh Avenue process and the visioning and the branding that we're working on. So, back in 2018, the Seventh Avenue Streetscape had their public kickoff, and between 2018 and 2020, there were several reviews and updates on the Streetscape design. And meanwhile, in the Seventh Avenue District in 2020, we started the Hendersonville Farmers' Market to bring more attention to the district. In 2020 and 2021, the Streetscape was supposed to begin, as I'm sure you're, you're familiar with, but due to COVID and plenty of things related to that, the Streetscape had been delayed, and it hopefully will happen soon enough this year. As a part of the design and the review designs, we had reviewed a gateway sign for the district from Watermark Landscape, who is the landscape architect that we have onboard with that. And so, then our community character team had reviewed this gateway sign, and that just evolved into a bigger conversation about visioning and branding for the district. So, it was all determined for our downtown work plan that in spring of 2021, we created an RFP that would identify a consultant that would help us with marketing, branding, visioning for the district. This included, a big part of this process would include public participation and public involvement. Some of the things that we requested as a part of that RFP was an outline for public input that would include what the consultant would do and what our staff would do, that they would provide us a simple vision story or a theme outline that would include a brief summary for how that brand was developed, including an outline of the public input that we had involved with it, as well as a logo design that can be adapted in multiple formats. Last year, we had 22 proposals that were submitted. Our staff narrowed them down to eight, and then our advisory board and subcommittee narrowed that down to four. And since then, we had one withdrew, just as they have moved on to other things. In June of 2021, we did put that project on pause due to the discussion related to the Green Meadows and Brooklyn neighborhood. The advisory board just wanted to take a pause to make some space for those neighborhood, there are the folks in the neighborhood to have those discussions. So, desired outcomes for this project would be, like I've mentioned before, community input and community involvement through online surveys, public input, just a broad way, so that way, we can make sure that the business owners, property owners, and neighbors in the community have a part in, in saying what they want Seventh Avenue to be and what to become. District visioning, so narrowing down that district to promote the authentic assets of the district. Seventh Avenue is unique, it's also a part of downtown, so keeping it unique while also that greater downtown experience. Some other desired outcomes include just naming. We have a lot of things that list Historic Seventh Avenue District, Seventh Avenue Historic District, Depot District, and then you can spell Seventh out, or you can use the number. So, just a, a good way to have one focused look of what we use for that. And then a district logo that can be complimentary to the H logo that we currently have for downtown, but is distinctive for Seventh Avenue. This would help us inform the gateway signage, as well as marketing collateral, and hopefully it can be something that can help with our farmers market marketing as well. Ideally, it could be a logo that could then have some additional farmers market design suggestions. So, we had four consultants that we narrowed it down to, and like I'd mentioned, we have three now in this process because one has withdrawn. All of the consultants that we have, these top three, have experience well beyond just marketing and advertising, more in that place, branding, strategic planning, visioning, a lot of public input. Two of them are North Carolina Companies, Destination by Design in Boone, and Motley Local, I believe they were Burlington area, and then Arnett Muldoon is in Greenville, South Carolina, and they were who designed our H logo, probably 15 years ago. So, back last summer, we had a selection committee that was going to interview the top three consultants. That includes our community character team, which I have them listed here, Matthew Hickman, Caroline Gunther, Linda DiPaola, who is a property owner in Seventh Avenue, Patsy Dupree, who's a downtown volunteer, Michelle Sparks, who owns Art Mob. We had also invited Crystal Colley, who was involved with the Green Meadows Brooklyn Discussions, as well as Michelle Owens, who's the executive director of the TDA. And then recently, I've met with the folks who own Art on Seventh, and have invited them to be involved. Then also, our downtown and community development staff would provide our experience to, to help support any of that selection as well. We've got a great wealth of, of knowledge in our department, so I think it can be very helpful. And then, ask if anyone had any other recommendations, and this is just for a selection committee, so it doesn't need to be a huge group, because then we'll have a great amount of public input going forward. The selection committee will use criteria and metrics to determine the best consultant based off their skills and creativity, their resources, their staff and their experience in similar projects, their approach to public input and engagement, and then because of the quality of the consultants that we had, and their experience in downtown planning and visioning, there might be future projects that might make sense to work with them on. Next steps, so today, present to you guys, and then later this month or early April, we would interview those consultants, select a firm in April or May. This summer, start the project, which would include all of that public input, public participation, and that is right when our farmers market starts, so we can have a lot of great opportunities for public input then, and as well as other events and community events. And then hopefully, late fall, or late summer, early fall, we can complete the project and have a, a nice new logo and a nice new style for Seventh Avenue that would launch right around when the Streetscape, knock on wood, is, is able to happen. And that's all I have for y'all, if you have any questions or comments or recommendations.
Questions or comments, anyone?
Can you, just for the public's knowledge, explain why a project like this would be important for the district? So, what, what is the purpose for us trying to come up with a cohesive vision?
Yeah, absolutely. So, one thing that particularly raises my ears is when I have folks who come and say, oh, Seventh Avenue should be an arts district, or Seventh Avenue should be called a cultural district, and that's, you know, one person who comes to me and comes up with, with the whole plan for the district. But having this process where folks are involved and contributing to it, to have that unified look is, to me, one of the number-one things. And then number-two is, so when we are, we will have this nice, beautiful Streetscape done, we've got a lot of businesses that are coming into the district and a lot of buildings that are being renovated, and so being able to promote it as this distinct area that while it's a part of downtown, it is its own unique style. So, we've got basically ways to market and promote the district, as well as, you know, bringing folks involved with it in the process. That answer?
Yeah, I think my only biggest, well, my biggest recommendation would be to make sure that we are paying particular attention to residents that live in the area and not just the business owners, and making sure that we are reaching out to them in multiple ways and multiple touchpoints, so that they can provide their input. So, it's not just meetings, but maybe we send them letters, or we do it on Facebook, or you know how, you know. But like, just make sure there's multiple avenues for them to be able to provide input, specifically residents.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Sins, and that's a great segue into a suggestion I was going to make, looking at the selection committee, I would suggest that we maybe invite an older member of the Green Meadows community to participate on the selection committee. That way, you have someone who has lived there, particularly somebody that maybe has been there a good part of their life and knows the history of the neighborhood, the history of Seventh Avenue. I think that'd be a good person to get them involved on the selection committee, and then that can help move right on over to the, some of the, generating that community support as it relates to community input. That would be a suggestion if, if you're so willing to entertain that, your staff, or not.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay.
I also would say the more you can honor the history of the area, the better, and the better that the, the vision will be.
Oh, yeah, you don't want to create something that's not authentic to the area and the district to promote, and I would definitely take any recommendations of, of folks to join that selection.
Other questions, comments, suggestions? Okay.
Thank you.
City Council comments? Anyone have something they'd like to bring up?
Madam Mayor, I do. It has nothing to do with city business. Just letting you know that, so everybody can breathe easy.
City Council comments? Anyone have something they'd like to bring up?
Madam Mayor, I do. It has nothing to do with city business.
Okay.
Just letting you know that, so everybody can breathe easy for a moment. Um, I, you know, I haven't done this in 12 years, but I'll admit, the events of the last 10 days have just made me want to say something, so I'm just going to say it. Um, I, I guess as a council member and as a, a member of a functioning democracy, um, I just want to express my support for a number of groups of people. The invasion of Ukraine certainly has on everybody's attention, um, but in the Sudan in October, there was a military coup to take over their country, and there is certain acts that the Chinese have been doing to affect the Taiwanese feeling of, uh, a sense of security. And so, you know, we're blessed to live in a country where people respect differences even when they really differ, and we have a functioning democracy. Um, you know, I know that we just left Afghanistan in August, um, but our stated mission there was not to be occupiers, it was to establish a democratically chosen government, which is not what the Russians are doing in the Ukraine. So, um, you know, I, I want to just say something, I guess, express my support as a council member to those folks in those areas, and also for the Russians who feel, um, kidnapped in this circumstance, whether they're in the military or whether they're members of Russian society, um, for them trying to establish, to maintain, and to keep a democratically chosen government. That was it.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know how many of you either saw pictures or drove by, there was kind of a somewhat spontaneous, uh, support Ukraine.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I don't know if we, if you would call it a demonstration, but a, a group right across from the high school.
And it led to an accident.
Yeah.
My hand.
It was there.
Two, I know of one.
It led to two.
Yeah.
The thought, the thought was there.
So, even in small-town Hendersonville, people are concerned about world issues. Thank you. Uh, city manager report?
Mayor of Altona City Council, included in your agenda packet is the contingencies report. We moved $4,000 out of contingency to cover some legal fees, so that's, um, being reported to you as required by your policy. Um, along those lines, let you know, as many of you know, we were in a court case this week, um, for, um, condemnation of a piece of property associated with the construction of the police department. We finished that out today. Happy to say that the jury, um, ruled in the city's favor and, um, agreed to our $136,000 deposit, so there's no additional cost associated with that. How about that? So, um, we have some, uh, legal costs associated with that, of course, but, um, that is very positive, um, and almost unheard of, frankly, um, so we're, we're pleased to announce that. So, that's my, that's my report.
Okay. All right. Uh, we do have a closed session this evening, so if someone would like to make that motion to enter closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council entering to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A1 and 4. We prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, and to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.